Very good, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, April 4th, 2022. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's cable information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the Town's website at lexse.com. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Kathy Manis to give invocation for tonight's meeting.
Mr. Mayor, let us pray. Dear Lord, I just thank you for this day, this beautiful day, and this beautiful time of year. The flowers are blooming, and we can see your presence, and we'll be celebrating Easter soon. And just thank you, Lord, for everything you've done for us. And thank you for this council and be with us tonight as we make decisions that will affect the Town of Lexington. And just be with everyone here, be with our families, and thank you, Lord, for what you do. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Manis. It is our privilege to invite retired First Lieutenant Tom Lucas to join us tonight and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would come forward, Mr. Lucas. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Runaway Mr. Lucas, thank you very much for your service to our country. If you'd like to share a few words, we'd love to hear from you. We are certainly proud that you came and spent some time with us tonight and proud of what you've done for us.
My name is Thomas Lucas. I'm a resident of Lexington County from birth until today. And I'm sitting here today, on my next birthday, I'll be 80 years old. So, I've had a good life. I'm one of those that have retired from the military in 1981, a former chief of police of Springdale, a former pro vice marshal, Scoville Barracks. I'm a former, I got a battlefield commission in Vietnam, obtained the grade of captain, got out, went back in two days later, retired as a sergeant major. I spent my entire time as an instrument in the Rikine Unit in Vietnam in two years. I thank you.
Thank you very much. That is the definition of a stud. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. I would like to report on our executive session this evening. Tonight's executive session, we had one routine personnel item. We had two legal issues, one issue regarding pending litigation, and one issue was advice regarding agenda items. We had one contractual issue, that was a downtown development issue. No vote was taken in executive session other than to adjourn executive session. Do you have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report? They're moved. Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second submotion. All is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will look for deletions on the agenda. Madam Clerk, we would like to delete item number two of Old Business from the agenda tonight. Anyone else have anything they'd like to delete from the agenda? Very good. At this time, we'll move right into presentations. Our first presentation this evening is a proclamation read by Councilmember Steve Baker. This is a proclamation congratulating 2022 Miss South Carolina USA, Mira Bonslay. So, please step to the microphone, Mayor. So glad to have you here tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for having me. Hi, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, recognizing Mira Bonslay for being named 2022 Miss South Carolina USA. Whereas, the 2022 Miss South Carolina USA pageant was conducted in North Charleston on Saturday, March 5. And whereas, Ms. Mira Bonslay, a native of Lexington and a graduate of Lexington High School and the University of South Carolina, was crowned Miss South Carolina USA. And whereas, Mira can speak five languages and continues to champion her cause for childhood literacy and serve as an inspiration to young women everywhere. And whereas, using her platform of reading is leading, she has been able to visit various schools across South Carolina to read with children and motivate them to become successful in their education. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, that Ms. Mira Bonslay is hereby recognized and congratulated for being crowned 2022 Miss South Carolina USA and has expressed best wishes as she represents the Town of Lexington and the State of South Carolina in the 2022 Miss USA pageant this fall. Dated this fourth day of April, 2022, Mayor Steve McDougall.
Mayor, come on forward. We're going to take some pictures first, and then we're going to ask you for a few words.
Mayor, while he's doing that, I just wanted to tell you that on Facebook, the comments about you being as beautiful on the inside as you are on the outside was just amazing. So, that was kind of neat to watch that and people saying that about you and that you're going to be representing us.
Thank you all so much. I know a lot of people in this room, but for those of you who don't know, I am a lifelong Lexington resident, a graduate of Lexington High School. I went to Carolina and I'm back.
Go Gamecocks.
Go Gamecocks, yes. That national championship was a nice thing to earn. But it is just such an honor to be here. I'm so, so, so thankful, and I know meetings like this are so important, especially pertaining to business in Lexington. My parents right here, I don't want to put them on the spot, but they are local business owners and have had a business in Lexington for over 25 years. And just seeing how this community supports my family and all of the other local business owners is really what makes this town so special. I've gone all across the state, I've gone all across the world really, and I haven't seen that kind of support. So, we truly are special, and it's just very exciting to see all of the growth that Lexington has. And just being a representative of Lexington at the Miss USA pageant is going to be very special, and I'm very, very excited and very thankful. So, thank you again for having me. And if any of you ever need anything, Ms. Karen has my information. I mean, whether that is volunteer work or if you know a young person who needs a mentor, let me know, and I am here for you because Lexington is the village that has built me. So, thank you very much.
Mira. Just one question, I'm curious. I studied linguistics. You know five languages?
Yes, that's thanks to them.
Yeah. Tell us which ones those are.
So, we have Spanish, we have Marathi, we have Hindi, German, and working on English, but I know.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, this is two in a row for Lexington, right? Morgan Nichols last year and you this year.
Yes, we had, so we had Morgan Nichols in the America system, and then we had Marley Stokes who crowned me. So, it's very special to have lots of Lexington girls go on and represent us at the national level.
Right. We have a lock on it.
Sorry, when is yours? When is the national?
Ours is in September. They haven't told us the date or the location yet, but they said that's coming in April. So, whether it's tomorrow or April 31st, I'll let you know if there's a 30th of April.
Ms. Mira, it's an honor to get to read this. I've been a friend of your family for a while and supported your father in his business, and I wish that everybody would landscape as nice as he does. And, yeah, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Congratulations again. At this time, we have a proclamation read by Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is a proclamation, April 2022, as National Donate Life Month. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have Mr. Keith Lauer here to accept this. Would come on forward. That's very hard to beat right there, so. But I'll try. Thanks. Read this proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington declaring April 2022 as National Donate Life Month. Whereas National Donate Life Month was established by Donate Life America and its partnering organizations in 2003. And whereas National Donate Life Month is observed in April each year, helps raise awareness about organ donation and encourages Americans to register as an organ eye and tissue donor. Whereas, it was established to honor those who have saved lives through the gift of donation, as well as the caregivers that help make organ donations possible. And whereas, there are over 106,000 men, women, and children on the national organ donors waitlist, with the name being added every nine minutes. Whereas, organs from one person can save up to eight lives, while a single tissue donor can enhance the lives of more than 75 people. Whereas, organ donation statistics from 2020 reveal that 39,000 transplants were performed and 39,000 lives were saved through human generosity. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the council for the Town of Lexington that April 2022 is hereby declared National Donate Life Month, and the Town of Lexington and all the citizens are urged to register as a donor and become educated about living donations and champion the donate life cause. Dated this fourth day of April, 2022, Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. We're going to take some pictures, and then we're going to ask you for some comments as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's a privilege to stand here and talk to you all. I actually don't work for Donate Life or Sharing Hope, but I'm a volunteer. I work for the Department of Education, giving back to the educators who have educated my children through public school in Lexington and Richland County. So, I really appreciate that. I'm actually, like I said, honored to be here. I'm a living testament. I am a three-and-a-half-year liver recipient. I basically had one month left on my card and was lucky to get a donation of an organ. And, you know, from basically a selfless act of someone, just checking Donate on their driver's license or going to donate.net. And like I said, it's given me a new life. I have two boys, and like I said, it just kind of makes me emotional when I talk about it because, you know, each day is a gift, and a lot of people don't realize that. It's a gift, every baseball game's a gift, every visit to college is a gift, you know, just to get up and go to work is a gift. And I know it's hard for a lot, but I just wanted to thank you all. Like I said, everything in here pretty much talks about, you know, the lives that can be saved. And just kind of an example that I can give you is, you know, the previous Super Bowl that we had out in California, stadium holds 78,000 people. There's over 107,000 people in the United States on the transplant list. And like I said, that kind of gives you a little bit of perspective. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for being with us. That concludes our presentations for this evening. I'll move right into a vision plan for April 2022. Virginia Hilton Park expansion and renovation project will soon go to bid. Construction is expected to start sometime this summer. This is a major makeover for the park and includes adding new features and all-new equipment and lots of new space. So, we're very excited about that. The Old Mill Pond Trail construction is also expected to start late this summer on the Old Mill Pond Trail. The trail will wrap around the Old Mill Pond. It's over a mile long and will be lighted and have call boxes available throughout the trail. Our wayfinding signage, if you can believe it or not, is soon going to be mounted. Isn't that right, Wesley?
Is there?
That's right. So, the signs have been received final approval from SC DOT and will be installed soon. This is the first phase of the wayfinding project, which helps point people to different destinations within the town limits. All the signs previous to this pointed out of the Town of Lexington, so now we want people to come in. That was the whole idea behind the wayfinding signage. These projects and more are a result of the vision plan for the Town of Lexington. There's a full list of ongoing projects on the Town's website, again at lexse.com. At this time, we will have a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The construction work for the North Lake widening and Harmon Street extension is nearly complete and is open to traffic. Final signal work is expected to be completed this coming Thursday, April 7. This project has made a major improvement to the traffic flow in this area. The construction work on Old Cherokee Road is expected to have nighttime closures on April 6 and 7 from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, excuse me, between North Lake Drive and Old Cherokee Trail. Please follow the detours as needed. Beginning the week of April 18, Town staff will be activating the new adapted signalization system along Sunset Boulevard, 378, and North Lake Drive. There will be changes to the current signal operations at various intersections along these corridors. The next traffic committee meeting has been scheduled for June 8, 2022, at 8:00 AM. Please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway condition, or pothole that may need to be repaired.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to ask, Mira, if you don't mind, we have a few people that would like to have a picture with you before we get into business, because when we get into business, you don't have to stay for all that. If you all'd like to leave, but before you left, we wanted to know if you wouldn't mind taking a few quick pictures. Anybody?
I think the whole council should get our picture.
I agree. Let's go. Yeah. You have to turn it around, though. Mr. Mayor, could I do the same? Yes. I fixed my hair. I'm going to go.
I thought you wanted your picture with hair.
I wasn't going to do that.
Very good. We'll move right into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first item of public hearings tonight is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4325-01-014 and 018 located on Thompson Street. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-044 located at 112 Maxi Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Item number three, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5499-02-001 located at 207 Glass Master Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? And finally, item number four, final reading of an ordinance rezoning Lexington County Tax Map Number 5596-01-015 located on Carlin Avenue from general commercial and high-density residential to general commercial and protected residential two. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, that concludes our public hearings for tonight. We'll move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4325-01-014 and 018 located on Thompson Street. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Lexington Health Incorporated owns 1.62 acres on Thompson Street and has petitioned to annex the property. Medical office is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial, limited commercial, and protected residential. Thompson Street is classified as a local road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended limited commercial zoning for the property and local road classification for Thompson Street. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Cornes. This is the item that we were removing from tonight's agenda. We'll move to item number three. This is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5499-02-001 located at 207 Glass Master Road. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. George McCutcheon owns 1.08 acres on the corner of Glass Master Road and Brunel Road and has petitioned to annex the property. A small office and garage building are located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial and general commercial. Glass Master Road is classified as a collector road, and Brunel Road is classified as a local road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the property and local road classification for both roads. Make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manis, second submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is first reading of an ordinance. Did I jump? I did. I'm sorry. We are moving out of old business into new business. I apologize. This is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is first reading of an ordinance amending section 132.04. This is the loitering ordinance. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Staff is asking Town Council to consider amending Town of Lexington Code 132.04 of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinances regarding loitering in an effort to clarify the definition of loitering under the code. A draft of the proposed ordinance is attached. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manis, second submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5496-04-005 located at 134 Industrial Drive. Mr. Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Third Mason Real Estate Retirement Trust owns 5.1 acres on two parcels that are being combined into one parcel located at 134 Industrial Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. The property is currently undeveloped. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial, and Industrial Drive is already classified as an arterial road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the location of the property, the same zoning and road classification are recommended for this parcel. Mr. Mayor, make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4496-02-096 located in the 2700 block of Mineral Springs Road. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. P4SC Holdings Incorporated owns 4.3 acres in the 2700 block of Mineral Springs Road and has petitioned to annex the property. The property is currently undeveloped, but the owner plans to subdivide it into single-family lots. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential two, and Mineral Springs Road is classified as a collector road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their March meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the property and collector road classification for Mineral Springs Road. I make a motion for approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, second submotion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cornes.
I've got a question. This is probably directed towards John or Randy, but on a residential for a collector road scenario like this, is there a different setback off the road for residential? What is the front setback off of Mineral Springs Road for residential in this application?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet from the right-of-way line?
Yes, sir.
And what, currently, this is in the county. It's proposing to be annexed in the town, and so issues of driveways, ingress, egress, like currently, that would be under DOT's purview, but if this property annexes, then it's a combination of us and DOT. Who makes the ultimate decision once it annexes, since it's a state road?
The town has always held the position that we go above and beyond what DOT requires. We will. This particular lot layout plan will be on the planning commission's agenda in April with a recommendation from our presentation director about what's proposed.
So, you guys have, y'all've already digested some of the safety issues that are definitely an issue here?
No, we got the plan this morning, so I don't know how much of it we've digested yet.
All right. Got you.
Got some ideas. Haven't discussed them with the developer yet, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Poole, do you have something?
I did discuss with the developer outside of those conversations about limiting curb cuts and also had a conversation with Randy, so that, you know, as I understand, the pound position going forward would be severely limited curb cut access, especially on the curb. Of course, that's ultimately a planning commission's call, whether it's going where you're going to go with director of transportation recommendations in those matters.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Cornes?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, a quick question for John. In the event there's a shared driveway where multiple properties are accessing off the same curb cut, is that 30-foot setback the same? No matter how far stacked down, those properties would share the same curb cut? In other words, if a curb cut comes in and turns sideways to access a lot further down, is that still following the same 30-foot setback?
down, is that still following the same 30-foot setback?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. There is anyone else? I'm sorry. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. This is a resolution authorizing the Saks-Gotha Lexington Public Facilities Corporation bond anticipation notes for the Ice House TIF. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The annual refunding rollover of the Ice House TIF bands, which come due on May the 6th, 2022, requires a resolution from town council. The attached resolution authorizes the banned rollover and matters related thereto. This authorization is necessary due to the project delay from the 2015 flood, which resulted in the rollover period extending beyond the time provided in the original ordinance. This process ensures the bands are properly issued as tax-exempt notes. I make a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize Satz-Gotha Lexington Public Facilities Corporation bond anticipated notes, Ice House TIF, and the matters related thereto.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, second. That motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carons. This is a resolution of the ARPA lost revenue election. Councilmember Todd Carons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The U.S. Treasury has issued the final rule for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA. One of the key new provisions allows the town to elect a standard $10 million lost revenue amount instead of applying the lost revenue formula. The standard allowance makes compliance with the act much easier since all lost revenue can be used to provide governmental services as broadly defined in the act and final rule. The original required calculation of lost revenue using the formula is exceedingly complicated with numerous variables and is designed to be applied over several years. With the formula-based calculation, a risk exists for an inadvertent miscalculation, incorrect interpretation, or failure to comply with specified timelines for expenditure of funds. Any resulting calculation errors could require return of funds to the Treasury. The standard allowance is simple and likely to result in a higher lost revenue amount than would be otherwise, than would otherwise be calculated with the formula. The attached resolution provides for the town to elect the $10 million standard lost revenue allowance. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for approval of the ARPA final rule lost revenue resolution.
Very good. Mr. Carons makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Williams, second. That motion. Any further discussion? Questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is a boards and commissions application. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Boards and commissions' application was received from Mr. William Lafferty, who has expressed an interest in serving on the Town of Lexington Traffic Committee, which currently has three resident vacancies. Mr. Lafferty currently serves on the Building Codes of Appeal and previously served on the Board of Zoning Appeals. He's a town resident. The application is attached, and I will make a motion for approval to transfer Mr. Lafferty to the Traffic Committee.
Very good. Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Carons, second. That motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker.
As always, for anybody who's watching or paying attention, we have various openings on boards and commissions, and we very much appreciate our volunteers who participate in those. And so every time we do one of these, I solicit more feedback from our community. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Baker. I appreciate you doing that. Anyone else have any comments? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is American Legion Post number seven sponsor request. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have received a request from Linda Raimer with the American Legion Auxiliary Unit Seven requesting sponsorship support for the ALA Palmetto Girls State Program scheduled for June 12 through 18 at Presbyterian College. The cost per girl is $340. We also received a request from David Griffith with the American Legion Post Seven requesting sponsorship support for the South Carolina Palmetto Boys State Program scheduled for June 13 through 19 at Anderson University. Cost per boy is $300. I make a motion to sponsor one boy and one girl.
Very good. Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manis, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Do you know why it costs $40 more to send a girl than it does a boy?
I have three girls and I don't have a boy.
You should do. You have three girls.
You have three girls. You should know.
Oh, I'm just like this when the girls... All right. Anyone else have anything? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is the accommodations tax 2022 applications. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March the 10th, 2022, the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee reviewed the 2022 accommodations tax projects that requested funds from the 65% ATAX fund allocation. Twelve applicants submitted requests totaling $227,045. A spreadsheet listing the requests, the accommodations tax committee, and council award recommendations is attached for your review and approval. Award amounts equal this year's available funds of $104,000. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for council approval.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carons, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Very good. Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we'll hear announcements from Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my privilege to start announcements tonight by wishing Kathy Manis a happy birthday tomorrow. We love you, Kathy. Hope you have a wonderful day. The Ice House Amphitheater has some great concerts lined up for this spring. We're all thrilled to have the Lexington Live Free Concerts back with eight consecutive Thursday nights, and it starts this Thursday at 6:30 with Vinyl Junkies. The Town of Lexington and Nephron Pharmaceuticals will host the concerts. Our downtown venue promoter, Walker Brewer, has put together a great lineup, so please visit www/icehouseamphitheater.com for a list of all concerts and events. We have several town meetings lined up for April, including the Board of Zonings this Thursday at 5:30. The Board of Appearance will meet on April the 12th at 5:30. Council will meet again on April the 18th in the Conference Center at 6 for council work session. The Planning Commission will meet on April the 20th at 8:00 AM in the council chambers, and Town Hall will be closed on April the 15th in observance of Good Friday. On behalf of the mayor and fellow council members, we wish you and your family a very happy and blessed Easter, and thank you for watching the Town of Lexington council meeting tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Any other announcements?
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
I know it's quarter to nine, but for those with, with children who may be watching this, please check your email. I believe the school district has sent out an email about canceling school tomorrow for part of the day doing the weather.
Very good. Thank you.
Inclamant weather.
Inclamant weather tomorrow, so please pay attention. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Happy birthday, Ms. Manis.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions from the news media this evening? None with us tonight? Any public comments? Any public comments regarding tonight's agenda? Very good. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Monday evening, December, December 7th?
April 4th.
Is that's April Fools, Jake? Is that, is that what that is? April 4th, 2020. Recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel 1301 several times during this week, and a video will be available on the town's website at lex sc dot com. You will get repaid, Karen. Without objection, we are adjourned.